Call the meetings for order and we begin with an invocation.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we are, you are the inspiration of all good things. We ask you to be with this city commission. As they gather for their meeting to guide them to the gift of the Holy Spirit in their time together. Help them to make wise decisions according to your will, and we ask this to your son, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns forever and ever. Amen.
Congratulations. I am of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, we stand on the nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Is there, are there any changes to the agenda? There's a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, secondly, Commissioner Hatch to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And next, moving on to public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you come to the podium, state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. The commission will listen and consider your comments. But no immediate action will be taken at this time. Is there anyone from the public to speak this evening? Moving on to the discussion agenda then, we have the city fireworks display. We have Mr. Heinz here this evening.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for letting me come speak again. We had to come here and ask if we can give the permanent fees from the stands applied to go to the city fireworks display. I think we've done it the last two years, possibly three years. Basically, what that is, is anything that for the tents and these stands in town, the permits, the money that they pay for that, the city could head and donate that for the fireworks display.
I think that's worthwhile. I think it's gonna, well, way that we can, you know, help with that great production that you do. So I would make a motion to support using Dana's Firework fees to support the fireworks display.
Seven.
I have a motion by.
The additional fireworks stands.
So we wouldn't put permit. We don't want just it to be Dana's fireworks stand, but it be the permit fees from all fireworks stands set up in Cleveland. Is that what your intent was?
Exactly my intent.
Somehow city limits or.
Yeah.
Do we have an idea of what that amounts to then in terms of a dollar amount per donation?
I'm trying to remember what it was last year, but it was around twenty seven.
It was either twenty-two or twenty-seven, somewhere. I think it fluctuates because I think there was a newer stand in town last year.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner, second by the insurance to use the permit fees that are collected by the city to support the city fireworks display. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
And then the second thing is, is if the city, we're going to have to do with a, I'm gonna call payment kind that we have the fire department. We have the city police, and I know the cloud kind of real fire trucks will be out there, and then the city department brings out their barriers. And we put around there, then we got to take everything off, so we keep everybody away. See if we can do that again this year. It's not really the budget or anything, it's just every year it's been, I almost say volunteer, but we asked, you know, if we can have the assistance.
We'll need a motion for that first. If the, or leave for the chief's discretion or however you want to do it.
Sure, I think it's, I think it's beneficial to have those resources there anyway, and so to be able to, I mean, be proactive with that. I don't see, you know, I don't know that we need to make it formal.
And we've already had a meeting with John when Ashley was back last, we came back and introduced her to him. That way she's familiar who he is and he knows who she is because she's out there most of the time. And then other than that, I think, you know, Brent's always been out there to help and everything, the city, you know. They don't do any of the work except for the fire guys that help with the show, and they're, one of them's licensed shooter too, and the other one is going to the course of shooting, so it's not, we just let anybody start picking up the fireworks, so.
Very good to know also.
And while we're gonna have newer ones this year that we're, we're teaching because we're trying to get more people involved. Because this year normally it takes us one day, three years ago it took us two days, but this year since we're doing some new stuff, trying different stuff, it's gonna take two days, not a full two days, but the second day will be a full day for sure, but we're trying to get ahead. We're bringing more people in and teaching them. Some of them have experience, been through the shows, and the other ones we're just trying to get them to go where they can get licensed to be a shooter, help out, so.
It's been exciting to see the, the show progress, so.
We appreciate you do.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
One more note, and you all heard the news, because of the terrorists. It's, of course, it affects everybody, it impacted the fireworks, so. Most of the stuff that got on order, got coming in and so got in on the twenty percent terrorists. So might as well think you had another twenty percent spend the cost of the show, so it's either we raise more money or we're cutting the show back just because of the funds that we can get. So if you here know anybody that's wanting to donate extra funds or more funds or even sponsor a song that for two thousand dollars, they can sponsor a song, which, you know, we announced who's sponsoring this and that. They get a, choose a song, they give us five songs, we pick the best one that we can get to go into the computer program to sync everything, so keep that in mind. I know it's a couple of months away, but it's gonna be here, we know it, so sure. Other than that, that's all I have. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to property and liability insurance presentations.
As the memo in the packet stated, we did receive a quote from the Excel group in Wichita, and so we've asked them to come as well as Midwest Public Risk that we are currently with. And they're both gonna present, and so the first one would be Chandler Lam and Mike Lam.
Guys.
Hi. Hello. Good to see everybody. It was kind of a full circle, full circle moment to be here. Very grateful for the opportunity to quote property casualty and liability. Quickly, my history, moved to Concordia from, in nineteen ninety from the University of Wisconsin, and kind of have been here ever since, more or less. So married Jill Howser in ninety-two, and then came back in ninety-nine to be at the dealership, and then left the dealership in two thousand and ten to join Federated Insurance, and was with them for thirteen years. And Chandler already had a successful insurance business in Wichita with the Excel group, and so she gave me twenty-four hours off. And she said, get in the truck, we're going to work. So, and that's actually.
It's been a lot of fun.
Spot on, it's been, it's been a dream come true. On that note, we build community has been the theme of this town for a long, long time. And we take a lot of pride in what we've contributed over the years, our volunteer efforts, and even in the business efforts through the dealership. And now to quote the city insurance across the board, so we're very grateful for that, and we'll be presenting EMC this evening. Currently, we insure Champlin Tire, Hoodie Heating and Air, Geissele Roofing, and Shapu Bowie. So Chandler and I are here minimum of once a quarter, more typically, once every sixty days. And so that's the first thing, if we were awarded the business of the city, we would commit meeting with commissioners quarterly at the very least. More if you'd like, but we'd be in here in person doing exactly what we're doing this evening. Risk management advisory, trending claims, trending coverages, underwriting challenges, capacity challenges. You don't need to know your insurance program. You do, because that is your job as commissioner, but it's our job to be your, your advocate, if it is here, for us to read the policy so that everyone can sleep as best you can in the insurance business, and we're all aware of it, but that's what we do on the backside. So we'd be very proud to bring that service segment of it. Prompt, efficient communication, it's what our Concordia insurers are accustomed to currently, and obviously that would extend to the city, so. With no more, I'm gonna turn you over to the power of this operation.
So we've provided two different packets. One is a short summary comparing NPR's coverages to ours and EMC, who you've had in the past. You should be familiar with. Just a few highlights. They are an A-rated carrier, they're financially stable, but it's not a fund or a group, limited to the five hundred million dollar capacity that you're subject to between Missouri and Kansas with NPR. They pay a program dividend, which you currently don't have, so getting money back at the end of every year on the calendar year would be fantastic. And I've included that in my summary, so on track to be a substantial amount. And they've paid that forty-three out of the forty-five years that they've been serving cities, so there's only been two years out of forty-five years that they've not paid a dividend, which just speaks volumes to the commitment to serving their members back with a, with a check every year. They also have an attorney direct program, so every quarter you get ninety minutes on the phone with an attorney to discuss any issues you might have, any underlying issues, employment issues, anything the city needs to talk to an attorney about for free. You have access to Excel Group, our agency. We also have in-house legal counsel for free at any time for any of those issues as well outside of the attorney direct program, and I've included all of those enhancements in that packet. So you can read through those at your leisure along with the full insurance summary right here. So at a high level, we basically took what we currently have with NPR and matched it with EMC. However, the Brown Grand Theater did have a different building valuation. It was over a million dollars higher on our valuation, taking another city with a similar theater age, same structure.
Renovations.
Renovations included, so that's where we pulled that valuation from, along with just updated replacement costs, labor materials. So that is higher, but all of the other building limits and contents values are the same. And then we have two higher one-hail deductibles than NPR, fifty thousand for the Brown Grand Theater and the water treatment plant. A few coverage advantages I'd like to highlight. The pollution coverage for the wastewater treatment facility and swimming pool, where currently you have a total pollution exclusion, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong there, but that is just what we read through the coverage forms on the NPR policy currently have. And then we have ethylene coverage, and happy to go into that in further detail at a later time, but it is in your, in your packet to read what that coverage covers, if you have questions, please ask, but you currently do not have that that we saw. And then, yeah, that is what we have at a very high level. And some property language as well in there that was a little glaring that we do not have in our policy that could possibly be an issue when the climate rises.
Chandler, can you give me an example of the pollution for like swimming pool pollution? What is, what would that look like?
If we have any type of chemical pollutant, it wouldn't be covered on your general liability, be excluded, but it would be covered if it caused bodily injury, property damage, or somehow got into a water stream.
You know, any possible release from the pool premise?
Okay.
Out or from.
And also just to give you a little background on Excel, because I failed to do that, but we have about a hundred and thirty employees throughout Kansas, and I opened our Kansas office in twenty twenty after K-State during COVID and stuck it out, and now here we are, but we're the only two employees in Kansas, and then we have a hundred and thirty throughout Iowa, Missouri, and Illinois.
And the Excel group ensures the multitude of municipalities in Iowa, and so Chandler and I are grabbing that by the horns and figuring what better place to start, uh, right here at home. So we look forward to growing that book. And we feel confident that that can definitely happen, but we're grateful for the opportunity.
And overall, you're, you're buying a risk management partner. I mean, it's not just the property casualty we can do, we can handle your health insurance, work with employees on open enrollment. We do everything. So Excel Group's kind of unique in that aspect. We home and auto, crop, ag, wealth management, trust, work, I mean, we do it all, and I know there's a lot of those services as well, but we're a one-stop shop for everything that you guys would need.
Maybe we could do employee training here, so they don't have to leave their jobs, make it short and sweet, but you guys can pick the topics or we suggest a bunch, but we could tie that in with quarterly commissioner meetings to be here. We do the employee training during the day and then come to the meeting and let you in on kind of how it went.
Question. Mike, could you, you said you work for Hood and Champlin Tire, and I missed maybe.
Shapu Bowie and Geissele Roofing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and please feel free to reach out. Don't leave a word in saying.
Any other questions? Also included a historical dividend sheet. You can see the percentage paid out for the last, I don't know, many years, but a lot of great coverage, coverage advantages you don't currently have that we would bring to the table along with the service you would receive. Very comprehensive and competitive quote. Any other question?
And after reading that, if there's any follow-ups of the second commission meeting in a month, we're more than glad to come back.
We'll appreciate some time. A hundred percent.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, everyone.
And then next, we'll be first then Smith with Midwest Public Risk. And we'll present the results.
Not all, Stacy. If I said that real quick, it's our renewal numbers that we got done recently. I was looking at. Um, there's also a couple of business partners there. For me, Mike Sandell, who's our CEO, Jason McMahon, who is our risk management director, and Derek Miller, who is your dedicated risk manager. Jason used to be some pretty as risk manager, but we just changed it over to Derek. He has Manhattan and several other areas over here, so he's gonna be taking over that responsibility. Um, so as Stacy said, my name is Kirsten Smith. I've been with Midwest Public Risk for just over a year now. So I'm excited to be here in front of y'all. We appreciate y'all. Y'all have been a member with us since two thousand and thirteen, and that's the kind of members we look for. Uh, long-term relationships. Property and liability, I will say, it is up about nine percent this year. That's due to a ten percent increase in the payroll that's anticipated for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, and we also did a whole underwriting overhaul, so. You're gonna see it broken out by line for both li, liability and property, and unfortunately with the rising costs of out of physical damage repairs, that rate did go up a little bit for us this year with reinsurance. We also underwent a whole entire deductible study. So there are discounts that are now being provided for any deductible that the city has. If it goes higher, if y'all choose to go higher, you'll get a deductible, and it is per line, so if you go higher, you'll get a discount for each line. There was a memo that was sent out to Stacy. I don't know if you had given it to everybody, but your public officials and law enforcement deductible did go up to five thousand. This was member-wide, it is per occurrence, just due to the unfortunate legal climate we're in. And y'all did get a discount for that, and that's about six percent for each of those lines. Our wind and hail deductible is still at twenty-five per occurrence. The traditional market is hitting about one, we've been seeing from a one to three percent wind and hail deductible, so that's significantly higher than what you would pay right now. Not all of our members can afford to have a percentage deductible. Not sure if EMC is providing that, if it's per building, per or per occurrence, or how that will compare. I didn't get a chance to see what they did for ours. So one important thing I love to point out about us is we are not traditional insurance. We are member-owned, member-focused. We focus only on public entities, so since it's owned by y'all, y'all have a lot more say than you would in the traditional traditional marketplace. Our Board of Directors, which Stacy was on previously, is, you know, comprised of members. They get to approve our budget, they get to approve any changes that we make on our coverage documents, any additional coverages that they want to bring up. You know, they, they all provide their opinion on that, so if it doesn't get approved, we modify. And that's, you know, to make sure that everything is actually tailored for public entities like yourself. I would like to say that our coverage is actually a little bit broader than what you would find in the traditional marketplace. One thing I do love to point out is right now we have a hundred and fifteen percent margin clause. That means if currently one of pieces of property is undervalued, we will actually pay up to a hundred and fifteen percent of that property. Traditional marketplace, uh, which I come from the commercial side, usually has a co-insurance clause, which means if you have eighty, ninety percent co-insurance clause, and it's not up there, you actually get a deduction from what you're paid out. So I think that's an important thing to note, that you actually have more coverage there for you. We also pride ourselves in having that risk management. Derek Miller, he is your dedicated risk manager. He will come out, look over all your buildings, look at any of the risks that y'all already have set up. Provide any assistance on safety committees. Parks that you may have, if you want to update any playgrounds, we're actually doing, hopefully trying to do a playground maintenance program for our members to be able to watch, or if you would like to attend, I know it's a little bit far from our office for y'all. So we do offer those trainings virtually as well, and we also do property appraisals for our members. We're trying to get back to a five-year cycle. We've added more members recently over the years, so we're kind of on a seven-year cycle. We don't look at that as we're trying to get more contribution from you. We look at that as we want to make sure that your buildings are up to the value that they need to be, and that you're adequately covered for what you have, so that you don't end up having a, an issue of, oh, well, you know, this is valued maybe a hundred and thirty percent higher than what you had. We also have a mile range for law enforcement that Derek can bring out and set up for any trainings. We have found with our members that they tend to like it a lot more just because there's no real risk involved because it's a screen, and they can do training that way. There's a lot of different settings, and all you have to do is just email us. We can get it on the books, and Derek will bring it out to you. And we also have legal hotlines for liability, law enforcement, employment practices, and a couple other lines. It mostly is used for employment practices and law enforcement. So you have access to that, those hotlines. It's up to an hour for each time you give them a call, so you don't have a limit on how many times you do call. It can be for advice or if a claim comes in. We also, for claims, like to pride ourselves in that y'all also have a say. We've ran across a couple of members who've came back to NPR, where they're like, well, we didn't get a say in, in this claim. And that's because usually the traditional market is like, we'll handle it and you can go there. You get to participate in any mediations. You're, you get to be out with the appraiser. You come out and have property damage and ask any questions. You also get the opportunity, if for some reason there is a declination, you get to go to our board and you can appeal. And we've had successful appeals that the board has approved to cover those losses. So it's, you know, just because there's necessarily something in the coverage document that may not look great, that doesn't mean that there is not going to be coverage for it. We are also working really hard to make sure that our members are having their property schedules up to date. We've had quite a few losses where we've actually covered it, even though it's not been on the property schedule, which you wouldn't get in the traditional marketplace. But we are gonna start sending out our property schedules quarterly, and so if you have any updates, you can make those then. And just a couple of important dates that we have, we do require a decision by June first. I know you have quite a bit to look through. But if you have, if you're staying in the program, we are having our annual member meeting back in Branson, October twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, and we hope that we get to see y'all there. Is there any questions for me?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yeah.
I noticed that you have flood insurance as our policy. What type of flooding insurance is that like? Basements, a water line breaks, that type of flooding?
It kind of depends on the loss, so we, if it's, if it's a water line break, it could depend if it's sewer or not, so that might fall under sewer liability, which you also have coverage for. Flood is usually the traditional, you have too much water and you flooded a building, and yes, you do have that coverage.
It was, so I noticed, uh, we had a golf course covered.
Yes.
We don't have a golf course.
Oh, it's just an additional coverage, so I had provided the coverage summary that you get every single year. And basically, these are all like some of our enhancements on coverage, so just because you may not have it, there, there's still coverage for it. You're not getting charged anything additional for that, so your contributions are calculated based on what you actually have. These are just what we get from reinsurance and what we're able to provide you on top of what you already have.
How many municipalities do you guys insure in Kansas?
In, oh, in Kansas. I want to say it's between, it's around, I want to say sixty, I should have looked that up before I came. We're trying to get a little bit more competitive over here in Kansas. Unfortunately, we don't do the work comp side just because, you know, there are a couple other pools that are really good at what they do here, so we're hoping to see if maybe there can be a partnership later down the line, or what we can do to kind of pull up that probably.
And why, why don't you guys do the dividend?
Um, so we see this a lot with EMC actually, specifically, but they're, what they're actually doing is overcharging. They're taking that money, they are, since they're a for-profit company, they're taking that money, getting, you know, profit off of that, and then just giving you back what you overcharged. We don't believe in that. We believe that you should be charged what you should be charged. It's not that we don't have dividends, we've paid dividends out before, but what we're trying to do is make sure that we do have more coverage for y'all, more trainings, things that some municipalities need that they may not be able to have access to themselves, and it comes free with being a member of the pool.
Any other questions? I definitely, I think we're gonna need some time to read everything over. We appreciate you all coming and presenting this evening, and if there's anything else that you guys think of that we should know about, please send it to Amy, or actually Stacy probably, right, and she can give it to us. Stacy, Stacy would be the contact.
And if you need us to come back out, just let us know.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone making the trip up.
Um, so now we'll move on.
Open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, you know, the public hearing, two eleven East Fifth. This is when we set the date for today severely fire damaged. I haven't seen any activity on this shortly after the fire. I talked to the owner and they intended to have it removed themselves, but they haven't done anything since so. Uh, well, I can help anybody that's here to speak to that, two eleven East Fifth, I don't think so, so. My, my resolution later will recommend a thirty day uh to pull demolition permit or we're gonna have to put it out there, I think, on this one. And I believe you can close the public hearing on it.
No public comment, so, alright, the public hearing is now closed for two eleven East Fifth Street. And the public hearing is now open for ten sixteen Washington.
Okay, this one here was fire damaged, the point couldn't be occupied. And my memo is wrong on this one because in the last couple of weeks, they have cleaned the inside out really good. And Ron is here tonight and uh he's ready to pull a building permit. And he's got his contractor lined up to get a little bit of framing damage up the dungeon ceiling and and uh rewire it and he's occupied again, hopefully. He's hoping to be in there within the next thirty to sixty days, so. We'll uh, we'll go with that. Do you wanna say anything, Ron, or?
No, I just, with all my health problems, I'm waiting on a heart right now. I'm gonna need probably more than thirty days just to be sure, you know, but we're ready to go back with the wood and and the.
You can pull a building permit within thirty days.
Yeah.
But yeah, that doesn't require you to be done.
Okay, okay.
So that's achievable, having the, the building permit within the month?
Yeah.
We can close the public hearing.
We can. Alright, the public hearing is now closed?
Um, thank you.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty two hundred condemnation.
I don't know about that.
Condemnation of two eleven East Fifth Street.
Yeah, these are just the resolutions that'll uh allow them thirty days to get a permit or the other one, allow them thirty days to get a demolition permit, because that one's not safe. The two, two eleven East Fifth one.
I think, I think she must.
Sorry?
This is for the two live.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is, I know, very much condemnable. I'm gonna be uh buying it from the person that owns it and I need to know when that needs to be down and how do I go about that?
The demolition?
Yes.
Okay.
This resolution requires you to pull a demolition permit within thirty days. If, if you want more, this would be the time to ask for it.
Is that possible?
Well, they're here now to make this.
To, to request longer than thirty days?
Yes.
What would be the reason for that?
Um, getting the uh, the uh, the person who's gonna do the demolition for us to finish with the job that he has come down.
But it's just the permit that you
Yeah.
needs to pull within thirty days.
Once you pull a permit, you got thirty more days to start the project and another sixty days to finish the project. So is that a reasonable timeline then for you?
To, to have the demo permit within thirty days of today?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright.
I thank you very much.
Alright, well, yeah.
With that, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty two hundred.
Just give it a second.
Second.
More.
The motion by Commissioner Hutchison, second by Commissioner Lambert's to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty two hundred for the condemnation of two eleven East Fifth Street. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next is resolution twenty twenty five twenty two zero one condemnation of ten sixteen Washington.
Motion for resolution twenty twenty five twenty two oh one.
So good. We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchison, second by Commissioner Lambert's to approve resolution twenty twenty five twenty two oh one condemnation of ten sixteen Washington. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, minutes of the April sixteenth twenty twenty five meeting.
I've moved to approve the minutes of April sixteenth, two thousand twenty five meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hutchison to approve the minutes of April sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number eight.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number eight.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve appropriation number eight. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Ordinance twenty twenty five thirty two, thirty five, public vending.
This is similar to what I put in the packet last meeting, um, other than there had been a few changes based on the code that I found. Um, several cities had a lot more to say than ours does, but Abilene's was especially good, I thought. Um, the first few sections just add on private property. Um, it's been very unclear whether we allow on private property or not, though that's where many do park. And it's kind of up for um, that's what I want. Interpretation, whether it is allowed on that or not. And so I believe that we've always um figured that people would want it on private property, but we do like to have permission, obviously, from the owner. So really, the main changes um go over to the exceptions where those two would be removed and just moved down further. The way it is right now, someone can come in and um I had someone come in about three or four weeks ago, said he already had a permanent business location. And I said, well, based on our ordinance, you can bend in the city. And there was no questions asked, there was no, there was nothing that said that I could get anything from this person. And so um, that's why this says that um, they do need to follow in eleven oh seven what they would need to provide to me for that. And um, that kind of spells that out a little bit better than what we've had in the past. Um, also threw in under D one eleven five oh six that they should have a like business, um. I mean, if they sell food, but they get a vendor permit and they go out and sell beer, you know, something like that. But they should probably have a like business. And we've also allowed it for anyone in the state and that seems a little bit too large of an area. We would like to make it if they do have a public, a pers- permanent business in the county that they would fall under this. And then eleven five oh seven just um spells out a little bit more what we would like to ask for. We haven't um, we haven't been able to get all of these types of things that should be received from the owner. Um, one of the, one of the big things is to make sure that they do have, if they're selling food, they should have a state issued food establishment license. And um, and then they're also paying, paying sales taxes, they should be. So right now we do get the sales tax certificate and their driver's license. Um, but this would put it a little bit further. It would also ask that they have insurance and right now we have nothing that says that they have to have insurance. And, and then eleven, let's see, eleven five eleven. We could also revoke that if for some reason that the state of Kansas had pulled their establishment license for some reason. And then eleven five twelve, we really haven't had any issues with this. Um, I could see in the future if we do have it a dilapidated um trailer of some sort, this would allow us to be able to not allow them to bend, to revoke a license. Um, I did talk to Deb at Cloud Corp about the Plaza and she said this, she thinks this could help. If she does have some people once in a while, I don't think they've ever set up over there, but they have talked about it. And this would give her a little bit more um to be able to say that they have to follow some of these same guidelines. It also has something about signs. I don't think most people even put out signs other than maybe a little sandwich board. Um, but it seemed like a good thing, maybe proactive to have it in there. And I did just go ahead and include the whole um entire code, even though some of it didn't change. It just seemed to make that all flow a little bit better.
Stacy, what is the license fee?
Uh, right now it's um twenty five dollars for four hours, fifty dollars for a full day. And if someone wants an entire year, it's four hundred dollars. Um, I'm trying to think, I know for sure we have one that has a, a full year. We might have two. I forgot to check that.
Can you just, in your, some of your justification, your memo, you talked about business uh for competition with businesses. Have we received any complaints or anything from businesses?
Yes, I have in the past.
Okay, um, that led to directly doing this?
Yes, some of it, um, mostly it wasn't a complaint of, I don't think they should be here. It was mostly, do they have a license to set up? Um, I think they're used to competition, but they kind of wanna more than even playing around maybe. Um, and we are seeing a lot more food trucks lately. I, I was probably here for, I was probably here for five or six years before anybody ever asked me about having one. And the last couple of years, it's been quite a bit. So I think the one that sets up at the liquor store has a, a yearly, I think it's permission to sit there, so.
So this really doesn't apply to somebody that's has produce that they're just putting it in their front yard.
That's one of the exceptions.
Yeah.
And there are quite a few exceptions, um.
Lemonade stand.
Yeah.
What about baked goods at Family Snacks?
That's allowed.
I don't know, I don't specifically see it, but.
And things like, um, ball fest and that kind of thing. Um, we don't, I don't deal with any of that.
There are wedding and somebody brings in a food truck.
We do have that down at the new, I don't know what the name of it is, the Jackson's Place. Um, and they've had people come in and get um a license for that, okay?
So is, is, is that sort of a request really kind of what precipitated this? That I have a private property, I want to bring a food truck on, but so as that, then it becomes a private event, not published, why do I have to approve this license? It's, it's kind of the concern that I, I guess I heard. We're saying no, that even though you have a private property, if you have a vendor coming in that's selling good.
We need to, we feel like we need to know that they at least are adhering to any state rules and laws, um. Because the way it is right now, you know, I can't just go out and cook a bunch of food and go sell it. I mean, really legally, if I'm going to make money on it and you should have a food establishment, um, licensed, I guess it's called, with the state. And you know, if someone's not allowed to sell based on something or other, then should they be allowed to sell a food truck?
So would it be, just for the sake of argument, what would be the difference between hiring a caterer or paying somebody to make a lot of food for a wedding versus having a food truck on a property to provide food for the wedding? Or other?
Well, caterers should have a license.
I mean, if they're a caterer that, um, I mean, if that's what their business is, they do have a license. They have to get a license with the state and then through us too.
If somebody just wanted to make a bunch of food for a wedding, would they have to be licensed?
Oh, they're not selling it. I don't know if that's the difference.
All, yeah, sometimes there's a big difference between selling it and not selling it. It's been essentially prepaid. Also, what we're looking at here is there was a loophole essentially that was being taken advantage of. But basically, we were having some food trucks say, well, we're on private property, so therefore we don't have to have this permit or this licensing because we're now on private property, when in reality it was a public event, anybody could go there, it was not a private party by means. Um, so I think what the goal was, coming from Stacy's end, was to try to shore that or to say, hey, if you're a food truck, you know, we need to make sure that you're legit. Um, because I mean, really and truly, this day and age, I could probably hop on Facebook Marketplace, we could have ourselves a food truck by tomorrow. Doesn't mean that it's gonna be safe uh or that we have the proper permitting and licensing through the state. So I think it's more so a safety thing too, to say, hey, what have we got here? Like with caterers, they have it a little bit different because I am paying them to bring this food. They're not selling the food necessarily. They have some different, I know the, so a lot of times those event spaces will have different licensing requirements with the state as well and probably with the city. And I know those caterers have some different requirements too. So, you know, these food trucks are kind of a new animal. Um, I, I kind of liken it to, a long time ago when I worked for the insurance company, uh, anybody and their sister could buy a bouncy house and open up a bouncy house business. In the state of Kansas, you had no requirement for insurance or anything for them. So you could just, hey, look, look what I got. And you could plug it in and you could just do whatever. We're like, okay, we have to have some kind of a safety infrastructure here for that. Um, and that's kind of what these food trucks are, anybody can get a food truck, put a decal on it and then sell food out of it. So I think it's more so, okay, we don't know a lot of these. And, and there's a lot of uh bigger businesses like here, like Chick-fil-A and these places. Now, they're doing the food truck, the mobile stuff too. So um, I think it's just more so, okay, if you're coming into town, you're gonna set up shop. We just need to know, you know, we've got a permit fee here, it's, it's minimal, but also we need you to provide the information so that we know that you're properly, uh, at the very least, that you're properly uh licensed and stuff like that, so.
Have the concerns that have been voiced, maybe more recently, are they by the food truck owners themselves? Or are they the owners of the property on which the food trucks are located? Has anybody complained about having to pay twenty five dollars?
Property owner.
The property owner hosting the food truck, but the food truck itself didn't?
Correct. What we don't know is if the, if their arrangement was such that the food truck vendor was responsible to get the license or if the property owner was doing it on their behalf. We don't know who was, we don't know anything about that relationship. We just know that we were getting complaints from property.
But requesting this sort of uh this, this um permitting is common in other communities.
Yes.
You know, it's not, we're not being exclusionary.
No. This was very clear in their business plan that they were going to have this. So what was Cloud Corp's, um, what was the guidance that they provided during that time about? Because Cloud Corp and Broadway Plaza worked on the original ordinance and intent. So was that discussed at all? I mean, my, my concern is that if, you know, there's a loophole, it's a loophole and we'll take it, you know, uh, it, it, you know, concerned a, a business plan built on that. I know it's a minimal amount, but is there a way to, if we're really truly concerned about just the licensing and making sure that they're a legit business, I mean, is the money part the concern or is the actual coming down and filling out paperwork the concern? Is what I'm trying to get to.
It was difficult for me to tell which one of those was more important to them. I don't know if you got a better feel for it, Stacy?
No, not really. Um, and I do know that a lot of people will come in and say, well, I'm setting up in ten minutes over it in Broadway Plaza.
Yeah.
I need to fill this out and um, they kind of do things last minute a little bit. So I'd like to educate some people to, I know Abilene's um paperwork, their application states they, they'll prove or disprove the license in five days. And I've always pretty much done it in a couple hours if I'm here, but um, well, Lindsay does it and has it for me to find. But if we, if we do it this way, there's gonna be a few more things to check and that's gonna take a little bit more time. Um, you know, if someone's not. You know, if someone's not paying sales tax, I'd say that we've had that.
Yeah, we've had.
Issue in the past.
Right, too.
So that's.
Yeah, if it's not being checked and they're not doing it, then that's a benefit to them obviously versus businesses that are already here. Not good for us. Should there, should there be an exclusion for um private parties, like if, you know, if a child has a birthday party and you bring in? Chick-fil-A, because every, like all the little kids like rise, then they still, I mean, even if it's parked on my front. I pay for everything, everyone just, like the caterer, they would still have to do that, even though it's a private party. Or if my church hosts, that's different if it's a church.
I mean, we probably could put something in for a private property, but it seems like they should still. Get a license, in my opinion, I think they should still get a license because. Unless you're just bringing in your neighbor, you know, um but if they bring in somebody like Chick-fil-A. They're used to getting licenses to set up in other towns. I don't know.
I just wonder, like, we're having, we're having a food truck at a hospital for hospital next week or Tuesday, but we're charitable. So we don't have, so they don't have to, it just seems strange that if they went across the street to Walmart, then they would have to, um we want, you know. It's just that that seems a little bit like.
But should they not?
Not fair.
Should they, should they?
Not pay necessarily, cause they're charitable, but should they not have to prove the?
No, um I mean. I think, yeah, I mean, making sure that they have a license to prepare food, I mean, I feel like that's our due diligence. I know not everybody feels like that, but we wanna, we wanna make sure we don't care, we, you know, so we do that part, but. Yeah, I guess I'm I'm just worried, like, if it's truly payment, and that's something, I mean, really, what's our revenue from this, is it a couple thousand bucks a year? Uh and we really just concerned about safety, if so, then fees and do the safety portion, but if we have businesses complain that. It's not fair because they're not paying tax, you know, I I know the arguments, but.
I know it's a fee that's high enough, but it shouldn't bother.
I've, I haven't had very many complaint, I had one person that wanted an annual license and he had to have the whole money upfront. He would have it when he had sales, and so he paid me. Hundred dollars a time, I believe, and it took him a month, you know, paid for it, and I let him do that. And just to let him know that it would be revoked if he didn't pay it, and he was, he was more than happy to pay it, he just didn't have it right then. But not very many have complained about the price except. The business owners themselves sometimes, like Amy said.
Like, is it more a matter of just educate people?
Possibly.
I don't know how much you can educate someone that paying. A fee to a government is in their best interest, where they're gonna leave that conversation feeling satisfied?
Well, I was thinking more of like the Fall Fest committee, so they know to make sure their. I mean, their vendors have licenses, the plaza dead. So she knows to tell people if they wanna.
I can see some some benefit to educate as to why that we have, we have all these exemptions in here, so yeah, so the hospital wouldn't have to have it. They wouldn't have to have it for farmers market, they wouldn't have to have it for Fall Fest. But it's a good idea to make sure that they have a current food establishment license, we want the food they're serving to be safe. It's a good idea to make sure they're paying their sales tax because that provides parity with our brick and mortar businesses. And that provides us revenue for us to continue to operate, provide the parks that they're in, the streets that they're vending on, so that that makes a lot of sense. But the fees are fairly minimal, um we're mostly worried that the food that they're serving is safe, but that they're paying the sales tax, that's the biggest thing for us. I mean, if the fees are minimal, would there be a benefit, if somebody's gonna have four hours or a whole day? They just eat that in the middle and just be like thirty dollars for the day? I mean, I don't, what is the revenue for an, like a year for all of the vendors that we, maybe the last year?
I should look that up, but you know, probably a couple thousand. I mean, there's a little work to it, um but. We don't do, the other cities that I checked, a lot of them do background checks and they charge for that. Anywhere from ten to fifty dollars, we don't do that, we do background checks for solicitors. But the commission asked at the time when we passed that ordinance that we have that amount be pretty high, because we're really. Excited about solicitors coming into town, so we don't, I can't remember the last time. I had somebody come for that, once they tell them the price, they they don't come.
The snow cone trucks pay to be out of the ball field.
And one that drives around.
The ice cream truck that rolls around town.
They got one one time and then they never came back.
Although they were here this year.
I think that's the problem I have, is like the inconsistency and the fairness of all of it, this seems very.
Then what's the resolution?
It's not that they shouldn't have, it's just.
Yes, but I mean, if my food truck is moving and I just am stopping periodically. Around the the town, so you're not parts in there, so.
Amy's reasonable, we have ordinances.
I just, yeah, just just looking at all the situations, because, yeah, and and we're adding a few more things in here, like a photo of the mobile unit. And like, like there's more details to that, where it's already a a bother to some people, they're complaining about it. Definitely adding more to it, but I mean, it needs to be insured, it needs to be safe, and they need to pay sales tax, everybody does. And they need to be able to prove that if they're serving and selling food, I guess, you know, the fee is the only thing that I could think that is an issue. People, and it's, it is fairly minimal, but it does need to be fair across the world also.
I do think if it was free, there was to be a lot of people that wouldn't wanna come in and do all this. And then they just hope, I just get away with it.
So they're doing that now? Yeah, I just wonder if you make like the the penalty for, the penalty the worst thing, you know, it's free if you don't.
If you're operating without a license.
There's a penalty for doing.
Five hundred dollar penalty.
Yeah.
And it is in here somewhere, two fifty.
And I can still think that's, I mean, that's a bigger bite than paying, I mean, that's more than half a year. You know, perhaps that's the method, and because I think food trucks are, I think they're great for our community, I love that we have so many more. Gives people options and.
So we can add this to our list to be some additional public education one, and maybe as summer as we see those that don't have a license, we can go patronize them and hand them an information sheet. Like, kind of like a a warning style, say please get this, and then, so that you can keep coming to our town.
So we wanna make changes to this, except that this is.
If I, I would just have to do this one time or every time, if I'm a vendor and I come to Concordia. If I'm a vendor and I come to Concordia and I fill all the stuff out and turn it into, does every time I come, do I have to fill this form out? And and provide a photo of my mobile unit, my license plate number.
In theory, yes, but if it was. I mean, I think we still wanna see the updated sales tax certificate, I mean, you don't have to do a photo if they say. I was here six months ago and I have the same thing. I don't know, the only thing I hesitate about getting lax on is then all of a sudden everything else gets lax. But if we wanted to say. You know, within a year's time or whatever, six months' time, certain things don't have to be provided again.
What are the timelines for that, so if I have a food truck, how 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 am I going to prove that I'm paying sales tax, is that a monthly?
We can look that up online.
I guess I'm just.
Quarterly or what, like, do they pay quarterly sales tax, or what do they have to?
Right, that's my question, essentially that if we if we worked on increasing the penalty, decreasing the fees, then maybe coming in every time doesn't become as much of an issue. If we know that the burger stand or um the whatever other one is coming to town, if that one that we know is here, they're on the books. Know that they're insured, but it's been six months since we last heard from them, do we need to go? Make sure that there's sales tax, and make sure whatever we're checking is still. I wanna make this conducive to people bringing in food trucks, I think that there's nobody I'm talking to that is upset that they're in town. I think it's great to have them, I wanna make it profitable for them, I don't think that the fee is significant, but if it's an obstacle, that's fine. Uh we can, we can address that, I wanna make it safe. If it's available to the public, like, I can have it on private property, but if I'm not prohibiting people from, at the birthday party. Is Chick-fil-A not gonna sell to me because I wasn't invited to the party, but I'm wanting to get a sandwich? You know, like, at that point, then they are selling to the public, at which point it's not exclusively private property. If I wheel my truck into your property, close the doors behind it, and it's exclusive for that, I think there's some benefit to arguing that that's a private event. But can I walk up to the food truck at the hospital and get a meal?
Yeah, the badge, the sarge.
Okay, so then that becomes, right, it's exclusive, that becomes a different event, whereas. This food truck, there was a business in town recently that um was offering ice cream cones. So they were giving out coupons to some, but then there are other people looking, oh, good, that then becomes a public event, because it's not exclusively for the private. Then, right, so then we do need to have some obligation, we're protecting the public safety. How do we achieve all that, making you friendly for the food trucks? But not have this be something where we're consuming this volume of time, effort and energy? To go after ice cream truck that rolls through town without getting free.
Well, when they aren't gonna come in, if they have a year's permit, they're gonna come in once, so. Trick by your years.
Or again, if we if we reduce the fee for that, then then that, then I'm a food truck, then I just get it for the year. And that's actually maybe gonna give us a better pulse on who's really here, there's no obstacle to it, but if there's a significant penalty for operating without that. Then we have our list of food trucks in town, we know that they're on the up and up. And is that achieve the outcome we're working towards? Is there some limit, and this is part of the question, is there, are there things that would expire within that year that would make that?
What we don't know is if the. Food establishment license, if it's offered by the state on a calendar year, or if it's like if they renew on March first, they always renew on March first. I don't know the answer to that, you know the answer to that, so that that may be one that would get caught in this annual review. Um some vendors pay sales tax monthly, some pay quarterly, so. And that is a conversation that we've had to have with some, well, we check it, we say it doesn't look like you're current, they say we pay quarterly, we go, we double check, yep, you're right, you pay quarterly, you've been current till now. Keep it up, I think, so they're, if there is some, some discretion there, but if we can see their year behind on sales tax, no, this this, that's out of line. If we can see that their food establishment license has been revoked. Uh may not be good.
So what you're saying, Chuck, is that we need to lower the yearly license fee?
I I guess, not not knowing the details, and I and I, this is gonna be today, and I I just. Not this, this was here before, I just have my thinking hat on as well as I should have, so I apologize for that. Ultimately, is that we we would only offer, or we would, we would license on an annual basis. Essentially for free of charge, you get a free license. The penalty for operating without a license is substantial. Barring any sort of like checks that we need to do, oh, I see that Chuck's Burger Stand is in town, I wanna make sure that his sales tax is up, but it looks like it's not. We're gonna give Chief a call and have him go rough some people up, you know? That it's gonna be easier to address on a problematic basis than it is to, like, we're putting more effort and energy into being proactive, which I very much appreciate. But that it's really gonna be very reactive, where we're gonna have a few bad actors that are gonna be problematic, which we can address on a case by case basis more efficiently than we can. Being this, correct, so my suggestion would be to have an annual license. It's free of charge, increasing the penalty, five hundred, a thousand? I mean, I don't, I don't care what the upper limit is to that, operate within your license and your phone. We're making it very accessible, so if you're not, then that's on you, and here's the phone.
So that it would be on the vendor to make sure that their licensing is. If their um food safe um licensing is current.
Yeah, we could have that to be part of the license, it's on them to make.
Right.
Yeah.
I kinda like the idea that, I really, I think that makes it more accessible to to uh vendors who are serious about. Um coming to town, I think that's a way to do it.
And actually, when they register and get a copy of their license. We know when it expired, so. Put a flag on it that it expired.
You can check that online to see if it's still active?
Yes.
But it's really up to them to, yeah.
Right, so on the on the application, you are, you are responsible.
Right.
For maintaining X, Y, and Z. Any lapse in this will result in, like, considered to be, you know, practicing outside of the license. Which comes with this fee for this this penalty. All the, all the other language can maintain, because I think that those protections are good. Right, those those, they'll provide and achieve what we're working to achieve.
I'm thinking about that, as far as like no fee. In competition with other businesses, the listed penalty currently, like in this, is two hundred and fifty dollars. So if you're guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction shall be punished by a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. What if our four hundred dollar annual fee is two fifty? And so is then the penalty, it's the same, or or the penalty is more, the penalty is four hundred. And the, you know, swap them so that it's less to pay your annual fee than it is to get a. A penalty, and then try to encourage more people to be annual.
I guess my thought with that, Amy, is I wanna remove any financial obstacle to somebody getting a license to operate. There's no reason for them not to do that, which gives us the the security that we're looking to achieve. And it only increases the penalty for them. There there's no reason for them not to to get this license. And if and if they, oh, you know, I know ignorance is in the defense of the law, but if they, if they're the first time to town, don't know what's going on. We can work with them, here's here's some education, we're glad you're here, thank you so much. This is the process that we go to, our our license is free, it does require these sorts of things. Oh, I don't have that, okay, well then now you need to close up and head out town, like, then we have other sorts of issues that we can engage, but. It it removes any obstacle to somebody wanting to operate business appropriately. That's incredible.
Yeah, especially, I mean. Money wise, when we gave away for fireworks about the same amount of money and fireworks for mess stands, we collect an entire year for. For these, I guess, like, but it it's not necessarily, I mean, the sales tax definitely a benefit, but as far as like the benefit of the. Licensing fee is only to require them to be licensed, so the enforcement of it would need to be. Better now, yes, not better, but it would need to be enforced, I guess, to make sure that people are consistently. And currently, just the the pla, or I'm sorry, the um Fall Fest, those vendors are not paying fees currently. And don't require any of these.
Not to me, I don't know if they have to for Fall Fest.
They pay, yeah, they pay a boost fee for Fall Fest, but right now they're completely exempted from this license, and and if we're trying to meet our goals, maybe that's not. That's not in line with our goals that we're trying to achieve either.
Which is making sure that the food is safe and that they're paying sales tax, et cetera, right? And so this would give them an avenue to make sure that all those vendors are current license paying taxes, but not required.
They do get a tax form when they register. In their packet for Fall Fest.
So under eleven five oh six, the. Public vendor's license shall not be required for. We have some lists of exceptions, um and one is, where is that at? I don't know whether Fall Fest would be counted as exception for sales or displays at fairs, conventions or shows primarily. For purpose of amusement, entertainment, recreation or education. So basically, if, if we wanted to achieve the goal of always making sure that our vendors had a license, we, we were moving financial barrier, we always make sure that they have those current licenses. We would need to remove the exceptions that allow them to not have a license period. So we would need to, so. That would mean if you had a food truck or a food vendor that would normally be required to get. A food establishment license and pay sales tax. They would need to not be accepted from that if they were at a Fall Fest or if they were at a church bazaar, or if they were at a trade show or the county fair, for example. We would need to not accept things that were sponsored by nonprofits. They could still come get it for free, but they would still need to come get it.
So I feel like that, that's like, sorry, my words weren't, like, that's the consistency that I think we need, like. I don't mind that ours has to go get their license. I, it's just one more check. And I think as somebody who's hiring somebody to do something like that. They'd like to know, like, oh man, they don't have a license. Maybe I shouldn't be feeding two hundred people. My liability goes up if everybody gets food poisoning, you know, so.
So one of the exercises that we do was the emergency management. One of the examples was. Food poisoning from a vendor and fair, for example. And that, and that could happen to anybody, but. But you, you do limit your liability if you have that.
So what would that do then for Girl Scout cookies and? Kids who are selling things as a fundraiser for school, so. Says sales of goods, wares or merchandise by simple sample catalog or brochure. So if we're gonna take all these exceptions out. Then.
No, not, not all the exceptions. We would take out the exceptions, so. The, the exceptions for a vendor in, in another situation where they would normally require to have that food service license. If they're under this exception, then we need to remove that exception. But if they wouldn't be required to have a food service license elsewhere, like the Girl Scouts and Sales, for example. We, we would have removed that. Is that, is that kind of what would make sense here?
Yeah.
Well, I think it falls under the eliminated stands of similar operation. I would move to approve, I would, I would make a, move to approve ordinance with fees. Following changes in section eleven five oh three to increase the fees of the penalty to five hundred dollars. And eleven five oh six B to clean up the exceptions that's recommended. And in eleven five oh eight D. To itemize or to, to list the license for a one-year period free of charge. With the stated, um, with the, with the modification of the application. Placing the responsibility on the applicant. To keep their stuff clean.
Would it be cleaner to take with, have us face all of that and bring it back to you?
I'm, I'm just concerned about the amount of debate each changes of rest.
Yeah, let me know when you've done the work. I guess that you would do.
I will get on.
I would move to table ordinance twenty twenty five thirty two thirty five.
Yeah, we have a motion to table ordinance twenty twenty five thirty two thirty five. Public vending, uh, by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hatchison. Any further discussion?
So let's have some more discussion.
All in favor? All of those same sign, motion passes. Campbell and Johnson standard detail agreement.
So the city's intent of the digital and printed version of the standard detail is to have a uniform understanding of public infrastructure. This will create a standard for specifications as they relate to individual jobs. These standard details will have cross views, measurements, dimensions of how these jobs will need to be completed. A great example would be, um. Let's say a private contractor is hired by a citizen to redo a sidewalk. The contractor would then have the capabilities. To either look at the city's website and print off a version of the standard detail. Um, to prepare bid for the sidewalk or come into city hall and obtain a hard copy along with. Um, a sidewalk removal permit in the same case, but you know, that they showed up. And then depending on the job, this may include an ADA ramp off the street. ADA ramp detail specifications and how it relates to the job will show a cross-section. View that will include measurements, compacted base amounts, concrete thickness and PSI requirements. It will show slope requirements for an ADA ramp and the landing required. When recall, landing required before joining up to a sidewalk, which will include any, any expansion joints that will be required. Um, included design example will show the differences between straight curve detail and radius curve detail. Um, depending on how it relates to the job, the standard detail also. Will show the required um, composite panel and truncated domes or brick domes. And how they relate to either straight or radius curve detail. Finally, it'll show a cross-section of the sidewalk. Um, in this detail, it'll show minimum base requirements, concrete thickness, PSI requirements, slope and dimensions. But the standard detail in place, it would be a safeguard against contractors doing work on city infrastructure that. Doesn't meet KDOT or ADA or other really regulations to which we are bound. It will be a beneficial tool for contractors and bidding the jobs, knowing material requirements and details involved in the job. Saving confusion in the building and inspection process. This notebook will cover many different aspects of public infrastructure such as water, sanitary sewer, storm drains, streets, curb and gutter. Sidewalks and everything in between that makes. And that'll make this a very valuable tool. Any questions about the standard detail?
How many pages do you anticipate if you're putting that on the website?
A lot.
Well, that can, can a manual. That on our website, I guess, just with. And is that being the, that, that's a, I mean, a significant amount of information.
Can end up being a significant amount.
I think th- these will be like a, most of them will be like PDF documents, which are fairly small file size. Documents in an index manner. I think your website would be capable of handling that.
So multiple smaller PDFs, you would just select the one that.
Correct. So if you selected streets, it would show cross-sections of gravel streets or. Asphalt streets or concrete streets and, and all the aspects that go into them.
And how frequently are the, the changes for these type of um, details? Like how often does?
I would imagine it probably changes.
My plan when we, I discussed this with Shane and Amy, uh, would be this agreement would cover. A portion of the initial creation of this resource or this um, tool for the city to use. And then annual updates would fall under our annual agreement that we typically work out with the city as well too. Type of thing. So on a year, at least on a yearly basis, we would go through and look at those. Um, you know, maybe in the last year, Jeremy decides to use a different water meter. We need to update the water meter one or. Shane's like, I don't like what we did last year for ADA ramps, so let's change that this year. And then once a year, we're making those changes. And then because that exists in a notebook or as individual PDFs, then you can change those one at a time. Update them one at a time type of thing. Does that make sense?
And you're seeing this as an issue more frequently with contractors here in town, or you just want a, a level, like a guideline for everyone?
A, a level guideline would be great. And then I have a lot of different contractors that come in, um. Proposing to do sidewalks and, and uh, you know, digging holes out my road to fix sanitary sewers and, and the likes. So, you know, having those compaction rates and um, lifts. Written down and just hand them to the um, contractors would help optimistically. So.
When, when contractors come to, they have a, like. Contractors get licensed here in town, like to prove that they have insurance and all that. Will they just every year get a new or, or when they? Will they get updates regularly or do they have to?
They'll have, they'll have the website, the city website. They can, they can definitely just look at that. And then they'd have to come in obviously for stuff they would need. Not permits for.
Notifications of updates is, I guess, the only thing I would feel like would be important since that is fairly frequent.
If they, if they, if like happened in the middle of the year or something.
Well, just, yeah, as they happen, because if you, like, if I have the whole book and I'm like, oh, I got it.
You did it last year. Why, why would it be good this year? Yeah, and, and that could be a possibility too. Um, we could update all the contractors. That are, that are licensed and recorded with the updating.
Annual update.
The new, the new updates, yeah, if things change. For sure.
Maybe just to further expand on that, that it's not something that's changing quite frequently as well either type of thing. Um, most of what we're proposing to put into this resource are things that are. Well-established under common engineering practice that we've been. Putting in specification and details for plans for the city being recorded for a long time type of thing and with very little to no change. So. That you bring up a great point of how to, how to then, if something does change, how do we notify them? Maybe either through a media blast of social media, or maybe every time Shane gives a contractor a. Um, detail, he makes a note of that and he, then he develops a list of all these people that have come get him and with an email address. And then when we make a change, you can just hit a mass email to everybody. Say, go check our, our website. Or we've upgraded our deals. Does, does that kind of help maybe as well too?
I'm excited about it.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Campbell and Johnson to design and create a standard detail and specifications notebook for ten thousand dollars.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Hatch. Um, to approve the standard detail agreement with Campbell and Johnson for ten thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor? All of those same sign, motion passes. Uh, update for traffic lights at Sixth and Lincoln.
I'm gonna try to summarize this the best I can, but I, I explained it pretty well, I think in the memo. So with the advancement of technology, overhead detection has become the new standard of traffic detection. The upgrade to the traffic light at Sixth and Lincoln Street falls under the city's responsibility to keep the traffic light maintained and to keep them in good working order. As part of the city connect, or the connecting link agreement with KDOT. This upgrade will include one fisheye camera that will be mounted on a traffic pole that um. Has the cabinet on it. And a wire or two will go through the pole and down into the cabinet. And then go into the controller. Currently, the intersection houses ten loop wire detection loops. Um, each one of these loops is cut into the pavement. Each traffic lane has three different cuts going with the pavement, um, one in the center and two on the sides. For approximately thirty feet in length. Then each loop is ran to the traffic control box at the edge of the road where it goes under the ground and feeds back into the cabinet. Uh, very frequent problem we have with the current loop wire system is. Cars sometimes don't get detected because they're not within the parameters of the loops. Oftentimes they go unnoticed for several cycles and either make a right turn. Or have to go wait until another car is coming from the opposite direction for that reading to happen. Um, this can be frustrating to motorists, oftentimes resulting in phone calls to city hall or illegal turns. Um, and an illegal turn on eighty-one could be, could be life or death sometimes, so. Um, when roads are snow packed, these loops can be impossible to see. Uh, this upgrade will also include a new sixteen-inch pedestrian crossing lights identical to the ones on Eleventh Street. And also feature the new APS push buttons, which will be ADA compliant. So when you press the button. It will actually say walk. Eighty's Sales Company out of Wichita, Kansas will be the supplier of the traffic control. Equipment purchased, they will be in charge of the equipment installed inside the cabinet. LNS out of Slana, Kansas came in with the lowest bid to install the equipment and have been chosen to do the field work outside of the cabinet. This project is kind of under a deadline as the CCLIP Surface Preservation Project will be taking place. In order to complete this project, in a timely manner, designated funds out of CIP for the Millano overlay of Highland Drive from Eleventh Street. Sunflower Circle will need to be reallocated. This reallocation will shorten the length of the Millano overlay work, but all the remaining. One hundred seventy-seven thousand seventy-two dollars fifty cents designated for this job will begin at Sunflower Circle. And run north to Highland Drive to Eleventh Street, then west to Eleventh Street where the funds will hopefully make it pass. The Sancho subdivision. So. Any questions about that one?
Yeah. How are all these quotes good for? Because you're dating Shane, you're worried.
I double-checked with all of them. Um, the two people that I chose, um, they're good. They're still good.
And this is the new standard that there's only one camera?
That there's only one camera that detects. All four, or all four ways, yeah. Overhead detection is the new, this is, this might be above new. It's, it's a pretty, pretty newer than it is.
Above new is a little scary to me just because they've never shut all the kinks.
No, it's, it's, it's been used in plenty of, plenty of intersections around it. GATI's has found a way to adapt. Their technology with our old technology. I don't think that that intersection in particular, I had to put a new controller in last year. It hadn't been replaced since the nineties. The advancement of technology also. Um, that technology only lasts about as long as the lifespan of a cell phone. That doesn't mean it's gonna fail, but that means that. It may be harder and harder and harder to find parts for because that are ever evolving, evolving technology, so.
You're talking about the new camera.
Yeah. So, so like actually the, for instance, College Drive, the cameras. Are already dated and that's the newest intersection we have, so.
It tells you to turn or like it lets people turn who aren't there both directions.
Correct. It is, it is, but my intentions are to get that fixed next year.
So I, I wondered, uh. They're gonna salvage the equipment.
They're gonna salvage the cabinet. And everything's gonna adapt into the cabinet. So the cabinet has a board in the inside of it and it has a lot of wires.
I just wondered if there was anything that we needed to keep for the older signal.
There's absolutely nothing to keep in that cabinet. That I just put in and then we're, we're gonna be able to utilize because that will actually work with the camera.
Oh, so okay.
So we will need to be budgeting for the replacement of these on a regular basis because they are a frequent changing.
Noddy tube wiring in there. It's pretty dated, so, um, fortunately, that's where we're at with it. I, I have every intention to make things better.
And weather's no issue with these cameras?
No, I don't believe so. I could ask James, but I don't, I don't think, I think weather is more of an issue for the wire. Because it's hard to see when you're driving and you don't know if you're parked on it or not. So if there's snow-packed roads, it's a possibility that you're not on it, so.
Right. I just wonder, I guess, like with the detection, how the camera works. Was impeded by the, by rain, sleet, snow, other.
I don't believe so.
Move to approve the purchase of traffic signal equipment from GATI Sales. For twenty-six thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars, an installation by LNS Electric for thirteen thousand five hundred. To be paid out of the CIP designated funds from Milton and for life.
And a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Lambert's. Any further discussion? All in favor? All of those same sign, motion passes. Okay, moving on to the manager's report. Mr. Commissioners, you may notice an advertisement for replacement of the brown grand windows. We did solicit bids for that after having the bid specs reviewed by the. State Historic Preservation Office. Um, they're very specific on the brown grand because it is, it does mean a historical space about what we can do. Uh, they did make a site visit a couple of months ago. Um, to determine which windows should be replaced, which windows should be repaired. And so those bits that took what that that work, what they approved. Um, unfortunately, the state historic preservation office does not care what it costs. Their goal is to have the as original. Building materials as possible done in this quality craftsmanship as close to original as possible. So. Um, we had to spread our wings a little bit for a spread or reach a little bit for a little bit we solicited. So we did use the. Vendor list that they had approved on our website, reached out as far as Missouri, Colorado, Iowa and Oklahoma, in addition to contractors in Kansas. As well as reaching out to local contractors that had expressed interest previously in helping us out. So. We're waiting to receive those bits back. Hopefully it'll fit within the parameters of what we have allocated in CIP to get the windows repaired. The windows on the north side especially are the ones that are allowing oyster to come in and are damaging the plaster on the second floor gallery. There's no reason to repair the plaster if we don't have the windows repaired. So that is step one. Um, additionally, the brown grand, we did talk last year about doing some boiler work. We are still working with heads to try to get a viable cost effective solution. Um, to repair those bullet pipes to make sure that they don't fail on us during the winter. Our hope is to get those repairs done before the end of winter, but we're still working on that as well. Um, some good news coming up next week, May fourteenth, I believe. I sent you out a written invitation, but we will have our open house. Out at Saint Joe subdivision. So you have an opportunity to walk through that new home from one to three on May fourteenth. Um, this open house is open to the public. We do want people to see the good work that has been done out there and that we'll continue to do. Um, the next three homes have been, have approved buyers and have lots selected on where they move to next. There's also two more applications that have been approved. Um, those lots have not yet been selected. Um. But we still have some work to do, but we are excited to see the demand so far. So we're just see what happens. Um, that's all I have to share tonight, but happy to answer any questions right now. Thank you. That reports.
Uh, the safer grant that we've been applying for for bunker gear, there's also a couple other um smaller fees that we've been throughout the year. Um, those checks have started coming in. Uh. The grant program was released from the um Trump deals. Uh, but I guess they were told not to write checks for a while, but that actually has been released and they are writing checks. So those are starting to come out. Uh, we do have four sets ordered of the bunker gear. Uh, one, we won't qualify until June or July, so it might be a little delayed on that one. Uh, Miltonville EMS update there. So the um, this legislative session, they have changed. Staffing requirements for ambulances. Um, so at this time, it doesn't look like Miltonville is gonna have to close. Um, they're gonna try and make up it for another year or two. Um, so it won't change our EMS district at any point at all. Um, there is talk of maybe doing a a contract for time that they can't cover, um, but we're still uh. Just beginning to work that out with Miltonville. Um, following up on uh Dan's presentation, um, in the legislative session, uh, Bill one ninety-nine. Changed the seasonal stands from nine days to eighteen days. Um, our city ordinance is only four days, July first through the fourth. Nothing changes as far as how we permit them and that we kind of control um the safety standards they have around them. Um, it just changes the amount of time that the state law allows them to sell out of their seasonal stands. Um, so if you would like this to, we could have like a study session the next meeting or two, and if you wanted to look at changing that, or if you're. Satisfied with what we have, we go on.
How many days do we have now? The first through the fourth.
First through the fourth, yeah.
Is that an eighteen day window around the fourth or just leading up to the?
Uh, so it is from June twentieth to July seventh, um, that they can sell. We can't make it bigger, but we can make it smaller if we want. That's what we've done.
I wouldn't be opposed to adding a couple of days, but the more days you add, the more fireworks you have going off on days that are not.
Right.
The more I have to drag my dogs. As a pet owner in the. City probably has, would have concerns about increase.
Four days is kind of a short window, but.
What we've had.
That's what we've had and it seems like it's been working.
If you would like to have a study session, they just let us know and we'll put it in on one of the next uh meetings. Uh, the last thing I have is this is National Nurse Week, um, very, very big uh profession. Um, very few people have ever, uh, not ever had their lives touched by a nurse in some ways, so. Encourage you to reach out and thank them for their service and I would like to thank them as the fire department, um. The nurses at North Central Kansas Medical Center for uh all the help and support that we get from them. So if I have any questions?
So tonight I'm kind of reaching out to you guys to put. Some things in the back of your mind to see if you can help us out. We're, we're seeing a big increase of homeless people in Concordia. Um, the thing that is concerning is is they're starting to set tents up. About anywhere that they can get them set up. And I don't know that we need to look at maybe an ordinance or something to that degree. And I know that gets tricky with people who like to camp and. On their own property, but um this week alone, we've taken probably five tents down on. Properties that, uh, one was the Co-op Distribution Center. They set a tent up in their uh livestock equipment. Um, we've had several at city or uh the airport park and then different. Um, businesses around town that have called and asked us to come remove the subjects from their property. So I I guess I'm. Amy and I have talked and we're, we're kind of getting some language put together for maybe a possible ordinance on camping in. The city limits. And if, if you drive by Seventh and Archer, there's a little compound going on with tents. Uh, Bruno and I are working on that as well right now. Um, along as with Lindsay. Um, so it's definitely a problem on the rise and I'm. Letting you guys know that we are seeing a big influx of homeless people in Concordia.
And the source of the homelessness or um. Prior residence.
Some of it is local. Homeless that have just. Lost, you know, their housing or whatever it may be, but some of it is coming from Salina. It's shelters are over full there and there's either problems or there, whatever they get on eighty-one connecting come up here. And they seem to think Concordia is their new home. So we have relocated a lot of people that were interested relocating. To other communities by giving them bus tickets or providing them a ride to get to. The other communities, but we're, we're doing our best to try to. Keep everybody safe and the parks clean and stuff like that, but it's, it's a big challenge right now for us.
Are we finding paraphernalia in these areas related to drugs, I guess?
Yeah, drugs, alcohol. Um, some thefts going on. Um. I know one of them is banned from Walmart. We actually had to go out to Walmart last night and banned it. One of the homeless guys who was standing there. A lot of people were helping him out. Which is great, the community's trying to help these people out, but on the hindsight is, is he just got out of jail for um assaulting one of my officers. So. Um, they, and they don't know the backstory on that, but. This guy doesn't want to leave. We, we've done everything we can to provide him. Relocation and he's saying, no, I want to stay in Concordia. So it's, our hands are kind of tied on. So. Thank you.
Um, can we set budget meetings? You're looking at it make it were to be similar to the last two years at least. It's July fourteenth and sixteenth. Sixteenth is a regular meeting. Um. Preferably three o'clock both of those days, but if we can't do that. Whatever works. July fourteenth and sixteenth. Monday and a Wednesday of the meeting.
So, three o'clock both times?
I mean, if that's possible, as we've done in the past, I think. Maybe the second one we didn't last year.
Yeah, maybe the second one we did after commission meeting is a study session.
Yeah, so that's an option too.
Those days are frequent.
Fergus birthday. I'll be, we'll be done by five then.
No, we will.
So is that what you're gonna have to explain?
Those days were free, I think that works pretty.
At three o'clock both days and then on the second one, obviously we go then into the commission meeting.
Any other staff reports? Mayor and Commissioner comments and research.
I have a concern uh at the. Old Sears building. There's a pain of glass on the third level. That's. Out of the window. And it's sitting on a ledge. Leaned against window. We need to. Make sure that doesn't fall on somebody. Cause it's just. Lean against a window that's boarded up, that. It's.
I sent an owner of that building a letter. About two weeks ago with some pictures, but. It appears I failed to see that.
Yeah.
But I was concerned with Chrome. Brick facade in the back.
Oh.
And then mortar. A lack of downspout. You know, the water runs down off the roof and. Freeze is involved and works out more on the corner of the building. I wrote it for. Four ladders a couple of weeks ago to fill the building on downtown about that. Concern that's included the Sherwin-Williams building. And then the old, the carpet store on Broad, I mean Broad were horse and. And horse down here and uh. It had the same problem, the window frame fell out of second floor onto the alley. And uh.
Well, this is right on Sixth. So somebody walked him out of that. Booth shop's gonna get. Injured.
That could nice uh media attention.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a couple things. So I appreciate Chief bringing up Seventh and Archer. Um. Kids would ask, uh, what's going on about that as we drive to and from. Um, but in addition to that, Chief, I also um. Wanted to just publicly say, I know, appreciate the fire, um, how much, and I continue to say this. I, I want your officers to know that we see how hard you're working. I know that a lot of that work. Isn't always uh reflected or or actions not being taken a- above the police department. In terms of our ability to prosecute, I think it's being prosecuted on a city level. I know that it may not always be able to be prosecuted to the extent it should be. Elsewhere in the county. Um, I, I can appreciate how disheartening that is for your officers. Um, but, but being able to see and and receive notice. That, that perpetrators of very heinous crimes are being charged, I think is important for our community members to be able to see. To know that our officers are doing work like that to help make our community safe. Um, I think sometimes it can be jarring if, if we see that that sort of stuff is happening, but, but the reality is it's happening everywhere. Instead of know that officers are, are doing their part to at least make the charges and and take the case forward. It's really important to be able to see. Even if, even if it's out of our control, it's something from that one, even so. Please try to communicate again to your, to your officers just how much their work is, is appreciated, even if it's not able to gain the traction that we hope to. But I think we'll also need to be figuring out some ordinance work to continue making other parks or communities safe, the parks elsewhere. Folks that are just coming and and uh don't know the right word to say, but. Uh, there's a lot of work ahead, but, but we want to support your officers in whatever way um we can. On a lighter note, I was addressed by some uh active pickleballers. Um, that we have some lighting at Hood Park that could benefit from some bulls. Um, I, I think at one point we maybe discussed. Switching over to a LED lighting, kind of as we did at the pool, um, I didn't know. If that's gonna be a more economical process or if we're just. There's some lights at Hood Park. They're making it difficult for the evening pickleballers to achieve their desired outcomes.
That was quite a large group. It was impressive to see the other night riding by there. How many pickleballers were out being active? It was good to see.
I love it.
Active, healthy, um, spending time in community with each other.
Yeah, it's, it's so cool.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner West to adjourn the meetings. Any further discussion, all in favor? All of those same sign, motion passing.